Um, anyway, I'd like. Hmm, got it. Um, I would like to call to order the planning commission meeting for February second, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Um, first order of business is the, the pledge of allegiance. And sorry, David, I didn't ask you, but, uh, do you have that flag handy by any chance? Very good. If everybody could stand and I will lead. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome again, everyone. Uh, next on to the roll call. So when I, when I announce your name, if you could please confirm that you're in attendance, Commissioner Holt. Commissioner Holt, are you there? I see, I saw you a second ago. All right, Commissioner Door.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Holt. Hey, Russ, so as far as, uh, Commissioner Holt isn't. Isn't responding, this is the first time this has happened. Should I just? Confirm her, uh, attendance in a little bit? I see somebody on her desk.
Yeah, I think she's here. I think she's just having technical difficulties with her microphone. So maybe just give us a wave. Oh, and now she's gone.
What I do confirm the Commissioner Holt is in attendance and then. Like I said, Commissioner Huxford's logging in, so I will wait to, uh, comment on her when she, when she does enter. Um, that takes us on to the guest business. Um, this is for anything that's not on the agenda today. So if there's anybody in the, uh, audience that would like, um, it would like, that has anything to say. If you could please raise your hand and then Jenny will select you.
Here, Cronin, if it's all right with you, um, we have our newest planner onboard tonight, Kristy Schmidt. So Kristy, if you want to turn your camera on and say hello, um, Kristy comes to us from Mill Creek. Lots of years of experience, so she's been a huge asset to our team.
Hello, Kristy, and welcome to the city.
There you can hear me.
Kristy, you have to turn off. I think you're on mute, so you have to turn off your, uh, there you go.
I apologize for that. Um, I'm listening to the meeting while I'm making dinner this evening. So I do want to say thank you, Russ, for the introduction and I appreciate meeting all of you this evening. I'm just here to listen in on the presentation.
Well, thank you and welcome again. Um, any other guest business in attendance?
But Linda has her hand up.
I'm sorry, but I kind of missed the beginning of the meeting. I've been having some technical issues. Um, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Sorry about that, guys.
Perfect, and yeah, just to confirm Linda is, uh, Commissioner Holt is in attendance.
Thank you.
And I do not see Commissioner Huxford yet, but we will move on. Um. Once again, any other guest business in the, uh, in the crowd before we move on to the action items? Hearing nothing else, uh, on to the action items. The first action item on the list is to elect officers for, um, two thousand twelve. Um, I guess, Russ, I'm, again, I'm, I'm a little unfamiliar with the process. Is it just as far as, uh, do we nominate and then see if they accept the nomination and then move forward?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, either, um, anyone on the panel can nominate or you can self nominate. And then you just follow your standard Robert rules of order to second and move to a vote for your chair and vice chair.
Very good. Uh, well, with that being said, do any, um, do any commissioners have any nominations they'd like to make?
Um, I would suggest, can we, uh, maybe put this off until after the, maybe the minutes and see if Janice gets on? Since this is the officer election, I think it's a little bit more, she might want to be more involved than the minute approval than it is that. So just give her a few more extra minutes if we just do the minutes, maybe just try to stretch it a little bit longer for, if at all possible.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, yeah, and she just texted me too, something about her phone, so I think she's having some.
She's, uh, logging in with her phone right now.
Oh, there she goes.
Hi, Professor Janice, I'm having some technical difficulties, but I'm, I'm logged in by phone. I'm going to try to figure out what I can do to be a part of the meeting else.
Uh, that's. Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. That's actually good timing. We, uh, we're gonna delay it, but, um, we can just do the action item to elect the officers. So we're at the, uh, action items and then Jenny, just for your, for the clerk's purposes, Commissioner Huxford is in attendance. Um, and then as far as the, uh, action items for electing the officers, we are at the point when Janice, right before you stepped on, I asked if anybody had any nominations they'd like to make. So if any commissioners do, please.
I, I have not spoken to any of my fellow commissioners, but I would like to make some nominations. Um, Todd, uh, Commissioner Welch, if you would be willing to act as chair for two thousand twenty-two, I think that I would be more than happy to nominate you as our chair for the upcoming year. Are you willing to accept that nomination?
I'm trying to get my mouth to work, yes.
And, and I second that nomination. Uh. Uh, with that, are there any, I guess, before we, uh, while those in favor?
Uh, I'm in favor.
I think so, is in favor. And before, uh, you know, before handing that off, would anybody else like to make any other nominations? All right, well, I think with that, congratulations, uh, Todd, I think you'll be obviously great with all your experience. Um, and then as far as the second, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Door. Uh, Commissioner Door, are you willing to accept?
I would be willing to accept that, yeah.
I second that motion.
Perfect, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Perfect, unanimous, I appreciate it and I look forward to, I look forward to everything, um. At this point, Todd, do you want to take over the minutes or should I, should I do it?
Well, and, and before, before we let you go though, John, you did a nice job. Congratulations.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Fabulously done.
Since you've already run in the meeting, if you, I can defer to you for the rest of this meeting and take the next one.
Okay, that's fine. Um, all right, with that, we're on to the next, uh, next action item. Um, that's to approve the minutes from our December first, uh, two thousand twenty-one meeting. I'll give everybody a chance to gather their thoughts and if anybody has any, uh, critiques or changes to make, uh, please say them now. All right, hearing nothing, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, December first, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, uh, next on to the discussion items, uh, the first order of business, uh, I'm gonna hand it off to Planner Needham regarding the, uh, our second briefing on the short-term rentals, uh, tourist homes.
Good evening, everybody and the council members attending. Um, tonight I am back for our second briefing on short-term rentals. Last meeting you even discussed a few key items and provided some really great guidance to staff. Um, so just a basic summary of what we heard last time, um, was that no ad hoc committee or focus group should be formed and it should be left, um, to, to the planning commission in-house. Um, no limit should be assigned based on the number quantity of short-term rentals. Um, and it was also unanimous that the waterfront residential zoning district should be treated exactly the same as all the other zoning districts, um, in regards to short-term rentals. So, and lastly, lastly, you had mentioned that you needed some more time and information to digest, um, before making a decision as to how unhosted rentals should be allowed, if they are allowed at all. Um, so the, for the purposes of this discussion today, I will use unhosted to mean that a full dwelling unit is being rented out and that the owner lives off-site somewhere. Um, so I've spent some time working on compiling a little spreadsheet, um, of codes in different cities. So to help guide this discussion, I've got, um, a few items in the staff report that can be discussed tonight. So I'll run through a summary of each really quick and then hand it over to the commission chair for discussion of each of the items. So firstly, some cities do allow full single-family homes to be rented out while others do not. Um, cities that don't allow the full dwelling units to be rented out are usually common tourist destinations and they cite workforce housing issues, um, as concerns. So Milwaukee, Oregon, Everett, Clayville, um, all allow unhosted rentals, but with all different permit processes, which I'll get to in a little bit. Um, so I found a pretty wide variety of different permit processes for these rentals. Um, some cities break unhosted and hosted rentals and do a type A and a type B. And with type B or the unhosted ready, having a more stringent review process. Some cities only require a business license or home occupation if they are hosted. Um, while others do require an annual operating license that must be renewed every year or even a conditional use permit. Um, so currently we do require an ACUP for hosted units. Um, staff, however, does recommend, um, some sort of notification for nearby, um, uh, homes in the vicinity, um, to allow those owners to, to get a chance to comment. Um, most cities that do regulate by quantity or location, um, sorry, most cities do not regulate by quantity or location, although some cities such as Milwaukee regulate the number of days per year or duration that a unit can be rented. Um, and most cities that regulate the quantity are also common tourist destinations, such as Langley or Leavenworth. Um. See here. So maximum occupancy also varies throughout, um, different codes. Currently, the city of Lake Stevens imposes a maximum of five bedrooms or a maximum of twenty-five percent of the total floor area of the home, whichever is less. Some cities also provide a maximum number of people per bedroom or a total number of people, such as two per bedroom or eight in total. Um, many short-term rental listings advertise couches or futons in living spaces. Um, so a two-per-bedroom occupancy limit would definitely come into play then. Um, in cities similar to Lake Stevens, required parking for occupied units is generally two stalls, um, for the residential use and then one stall per unit rented out or pro-room rented out, excuse me. And then for unhosted units, um, parking would be generally one stall per rentable bedroom, whatever that number may be. So I'm hoping to bring this back with the draft for you to read next month. Um, so your feedback on each of these discussion items is really super appreciated. And I'm here to take questions as well as Dave, who is pretty knowledgeable on Milwaukee codes, um, and along the cities in Oregon. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Planner Needham. Um, do any, with all that being said, I'll, I'll give the, uh, commission a chance to gather some of your thoughts and if anybody has any specific, uh, question, please say it now and then I will, uh, I'll come in and try to direct people if, uh, if we're not getting a lot of feedback.
I guess I can, uh, open up the discussion. Um, I'm gonna, kind of come at this at a, I like looking more like Everett's code has. I'm not a big fan of even licensing anything. I really want to have as limited restrictions as possible. I don't see this as being a major issue for us right now. Um, so I kind of like to be as hands-off as possible. So I like Everett's with the exception, I don't see why we need a, a license for the business because I still think so. Other than that, I really don't have, uh, you know, as much hands-off as possible. And I think Everett's is pretty close to that, except for the business license.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Um, yeah, I'll jump into, I, I agree with Commissioner Welch. Um, I don't, I don't like any of this stuff with the occupancy requirements or the square footage. I just feel like that is gonna lead to a lot of, um, you know, specific items that are things that happen that don't really fit inside the box, um, and the different ambiguities. And yeah, like I said, I generally agree with, uh, Commissioner Welch. I really didn't think about it from a standpoint of, um, like some of the things I, I would like, you know, I would like to know how many, um, Airbnbs there were and be able to monitor that stuff. So that's why I kind of thought, hey, maybe a, uh, you know, some sort of, you know, permit process or, or annual, um, checkup, you know, and, you know, I'd actually be okay with, but with, with what Commissioner Welch said, if you, if, you know, if he's right that this isn't a big pressing issue, um, you know, then I think I agree with him where his hands-off as possible would probably be where I'd start with it until it became a, a more pressing issue. Uh, do any other commissioners have any other comments?
I'll, I'll jump in here. I, I think I agree, I agree for the most part. Um, I, I, I would do, I would object to something like, you know, a, um, a total number of, uh, these units in the city or anything like that. I do think though, that we do need to be aware of, um, kind of how these, uh, how these buildings would be used and to try to minimize the impact that they would have on the neighboring, uh, communities. So I think I, I would be in favor of some sort of parking requirement, especially if you have, you know, a, a smaller building that is, you know, uh, has, uh, five bedrooms in it, um, and only two parking spaces out front. Uh, that, that kind of thing would have a, I think, a detrimental impact to the community at large.
I, I can see that. Um, I guess, uh, uh, for one of the planners, do we, do we have parking requirements for our normal single-family residences or multifamily residences?
Yes, so for a duplex or single-family residence, it is two dwell, uh, two parking stalls per dwelling unit.
So not, okay.
Um, just out of curiosity, how many, like Airbnb short-term rentals do we currently have in Lake Stevens? Do we have a number?
So we have about twenty-five, um, and that is generally estimated from sites like Airbnb, VRBO.
Okay.
Yeah, I did, I did a map of Lake Stevens when we first started this up and I, I saw about twenty-five. If you draw the Lake Stevens map, you get about twenty-five or so roughly. And that's not full residence or a room, it, it just says these are what's available.
No, I would say it's possible that that number may be a little bit higher in the summer when more people possibly put their homes on the market, but I don't think it would be an exponentially higher number. Um, we haven't really looked at it during the kind of peak, uh, vacation months.
And then, am I right? Commissioner, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry that I'm doing this by phone. I'm trying to be my own IT person while I figure this out, but, um, that would be my question because I know that this is, um, bigger in the summer. I know that it's mostly waterfront, um, you know, uh, that is, that is now being looked at. If it's not being Airbnb now, it's going to be looked at to be soon because property taxes have become so astronomical. And my question would be not so much as to what is happening today, but what are we going to do to make this sustainable, um, ongoing? Whatever we do now is going to be the jump-off point to whatever happens here in the next couple of days, weeks, months, years. And, um, I, I, and again, I say this every time this topic comes up. I don't know how I feel about it because you should be able to do what you want to do on your property, but you also are impacting very closely to the neighbors that live next to you. And there's a new party every week and other municipalities, none that I heard, um, in the, the presentation earlier, um, on this call, but, um, there are some other municipalities in our state that have really wished that they had thought this through a little bit harder on the onset where we are right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Um, yeah, and I, I had one more question. So just so I'm understanding that, that right, I know that Milwaukee has the, like in terms of eligibility, Milwaukee has that rule of two hundred and seventy days, you know, you can't live there. Um, is there nothing currently in place? Um, so theoretically, anybody could just list their property, is that the current? Is that where we're currently at? Um, I know that it said there's a, you know, a conditional use permit in place. Um, but is there any, like, thresholds for eligibility, you know, to, to show that it's, uh, not just a one-off rental, like weekend?
Yeah, so.
And I'm sorry, I'm, I don't even know if I'm against that. I just, uh, I, I kind of am in the same lines of, uh, Commissioner Welch and, and Huxford and, and Door.
Yeah, so we do have some duration limits right now in our code. Um, and. The permit process would be an ACUP and they wouldn't be able to rent out the home, um, for more than thirty days with no rental lasting longer than ten days.
Thank you.
And just for full transparency, so we, we do have the, we do require an ACUP. We do, we do have the supplemental use criteria. Um, but we obviously have more than that that are listed on Airbnb and VRBO and some of these other sites. So obviously there are people that are not adhering to the existing regulations, um, because we're basically a one-person, um, code enforcement staff. We don't proactively go out and try to enforce on these, we are complaint-driven. Um, so, yeah, we have an existing, you know, you need a type-two land use application, which is what an ACUP is, but, um, there definitely are people that are not going by that. So it's a question of if that's not appropriate, are there other better methods, um, that may be able to get us to at least get people to, you know, either register them or make, make us somehow aware of them without having, if commissioners generally aren't comfortable with requiring a type-two land use application or a certain level of business licensing, um, you know, what are some potential other strategies, um, to, you know, be able to, um, you know, acknowledge some of the other concerns that have been expressed by some commissioners?
Chair, um, so I'll also bring back the idea of why we ever added this to the work program is just, I think, what, um, Commissioner Huxford was referring to. We were starting to hear from lots of residents on the lake, um, in particular, that people were renting out the homes next to them, multiple or multiple properties that were really starting to impact people, um, both their privacy, nighttime noise, you know, different parties all year long, people trespassing, um, parking issues. So it did become a real issue that we were hearing from folks and that's why, uh, one of the reasons we wanted to get ahead of it. And also it's been an under-regulated industry, which in itself is fine, but it is affecting rental properties and the ability to rent properties at a, um, a market rate rather than a tourist rate. So there were lots of reasons that we did, you know, bring it forward. And again, it was not so much that we, we do have a code in place. Um, it's fairly rigid, the code we do have in place as far as twenty-five percent of the house, ten, um, no more than ten days at a time, no more than thirty days total. So it is very rigid and we wanted to, one, how do we modernize our code, recognizing that, um, Airbnbs are, are the wave of the future, the, the wave of now? And how do we get in front of that? And also how do we respond to the ones that there's been no check on that are affecting real property owners that we're hearing from? So.
Well, don't we already have regulations against the? These complaint issues already, like we already have noise times, we already have parking requirements, we already have, I mean, obviously there's no trespassing laws. So I don't understand how putting codifying it further into a short-term rental ordinance is going to eliminate those issues. Most times those get resolved on the times I've used, uh, short-term rentals, and that's all I use nowadays. I don't even go to hotels anymore. Um, usually do by, just like you do when you do a. Like Uber or Lyft type things where you get rankings and you get ratings. If you're not a good tenant, that time, then you get low ratings or something like that. And I know some owners will still use them because it's still money in their pocket, but you could eliminate a lot of that way. So I, I still don't see going too far with this ordinance, other than I do agree with, uh, Commissioner Doer on parking requirements because I think that's really important. We have pretty tight streets. You want to make sure that your guests and the car, the drive or parking is, uh, in accordance with that so we don't have clogged streets on our parking.
So I, I would just parlay off that and thank you, by the way, compliments to me that I'm my own IT person tonight. Um, I would only state that it's not the owner of the property necessarily. And again, I go both ways on this, but it's not the, the owner of the property that I'm thinking about all the time. It's the people that live alongside those properties and, and Director Wright just brought that up. So, yeah, you might be, um, you know, said that you're only two stars instead of five or whatever, but you're still having a party next door to me. Um, I do, a new party next door to me every week. And so I'm trying to, uh, weigh this out and say how best to do it. Is it, is it to, to more heavily regulate? I don't know, because I want people to be able to, you know, um, property taxes go up twenty-seven percent every year. So I get that, but it's also the fact that if I live here year-round and I have somebody that is Airbnb next door to me and whether or not they're, um, there or not, this party is going on and it's bringing down my property values and I can't sleep at night, um, that makes my livability less than it should be. So. I, I, I don't entirely agree with Commissioner Welch's last statement that it's all about, um, the owner of the property. The owner of the property has made a decision, but it's the people that are around them there that sometimes pay the price.
Uh, thank you all for that discussion. Uh, do any other commissioners have any other feedback for the city and staff?
I, I'd just like to know if our, if our conversation there is enough to give, uh, Planner Needham enough to kind of start sculpting some language.
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful, um, if we went around, kind of around Robin's style and then everyone said what their position was on unhosted rentals and the permit process, that would be good.
And if I can just jump in before that, uh, as Russ, as Director Wright had noted, we do have a pretty archaic code right now and it's pretty strictly regulated. And I think that that may contribute to people not really pursuing the existing permitting path through the ACUP. So they just decide that it's not worth going through the permits, so they'll just risk it and do it unregulated. Um, and so as you consider, you know, what is potentially an appropriate permit process, you know, I, I think we are looking at opportunities and ways to modernize our code to potentially make it easier on property owners right now, you know, a type-two land use application that includes public notice, includes a fee. Um, all of that is, is kind of on the, the heavier side as far as regulating short-term rentals when you compare it to other jurisdictions, you know, so that is where we're starting from. Um, and what we're looking at is, is there a way to develop a, a review process that, um, acknowledges kind of some of the major points of concern, so, some of the issues that we've heard are parking especially. So is there, you know, a one-time inspection to ensure that there's adequate parking on-site, um, that you basically do when you first apply for it and then you're not required to do? An annual business license would be an option. There's a lot of different ways to approach this issue. And so, um, when Planner Needham is, is mentioning, you know, what, that you'd like some round robin input on an appropriate permit process, I just wanted to make sure that everyone, all the commissioners knew that there are a variety of options and kind of where we're starting from.
Um, thank you, thank you all, yeah. I think I'll, I'll jump in here first. Um, let's see, as far as the hosted versus unhosted, I think that, I think at first it helped and I apologize if this happened in the first, uh, briefing, but I think once, uh, Planner Needham and the city goes through and actually lists out the code, I think it'll be easier to, to, you know, give, give actual feedback. Um, but as far as, like with what I've heard today with, um, you know, just having the restrict or the, the thresholds in place of the ten days and the thirty days and things like that, um, I think that's a lot better than the two hundred and seventy or, or like Commissioner Welch said, really just heavy in it with the regulation. And, and I think we're on the same page as far as the permitting process, making it easy but efficient. Um, so, you know, again, I, I know that what I'm saying isn't, uh, you know, perfect feedback as far as writing code. Uh, but I think if we can do it, do it in a way to put it into the future, like, uh, Planner, uh, like David said, and, and then as well as, um, you know, just look, you know, have a way to monitor this process, but also be mindful, um, and again, I'm being redundant, but be mindful of everything we said about private property rights, um, you know, plays. But then you get an out-of-town owner, you get somebody that, you know, was all about the money, you know, and that goes out the window where, you know, they don't care how much they cost. So there is a, there's a delicate balance here. Again, I know I'm kind of wish washing with my direction here, but I do think. I do think what the city has in place as far as thresholds and then simplifying the permit process. So then people aren't circumventing it is, is will be huge. And then just like Commissioner Doer and Welch alluded to parking, that's another huge issue I can see. Do any other commissioners have any other specific? Comments for the city regarding the hosted versus unhosted permitting process and just everything else they inquired about?
I'll say that. After looking through many of the other cities ordinances that were on our chart, like I said, if we look at, if I look at Everett's. That's the one I think we should be closest to. And it's only six paragraphs long. There's an A through F. It has, if a license required, if we want to use that, it's got a parking. It's got a no signs, you know, allowed. So you don't have signs up that you have a place there. But it's a, it's a pretty precise, it's a pretty both open, yet gives a good idea of working off for me when I was reading all of them. Which is also, it's very simple, which is, I think, pretty good for homeowners is the, it's a very simple code. So as close to that is what I'm looking for personally. I think that means a lot of our, that we could touch that up and it would probably meet most of what we want.
I would, I would just suggest, you know, I, well, I agree with simplified code. I think, again, we need to be looking at the parking aspect. I think we also need to make sure that we have some way of determining how many of these units there are in Lake Stevens. That's not kind of a guess based on, you know, just a search of one of these websites. And that would serve, you know, to, to inform the city and, you know, kind of where we're at as a city. But also if there was. If we have something like that, there may be a means of streamlining some of these code issues. So if there's a noise, a noise concern, we know that, that we know offhand based on some sort of registration that this unit is being used as a. As a rental home, you know, with, with or without. You know, the owner on the premises, just so that, you know, when there are issues, we can, we can address them quickly. But especially the parking.
Chair, if I might, and, and Michael, I didn't want to cut you off. Are you, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. If I might, a couple comments. I, I don't know. I, I like simplified. Todd knows that I like less regulation. I don't know if Everett necessarily lends itself to a lakeside community. So I'm just holding that out there as a. I know that Airbnb is Airbnb is Airbnb, but our community is lakeside. So I go to Shalane in my head. And Shalane has put in a, a clause in theirs. Cause again, they didn't get in front of it and it got away from them and it's become a really hot topic over there. But they have a, a insurance liability. Clause for the owner of the property that any of the. Damage to surrounding property, any of the blockage of driveways, anybody that's showing up with a. Boat trailer that's, you know, parked illegally, anything, anything, anything is now on the owner of the property. And so anybody that's renting out an Airbnb in Shalane is now responsible for the people that they have in that property. And it's, it's a sad way to go about it because again, it's behind the, you know, it's, it's after the fact. But because they didn't get in front of it and because it blew up on a lakeside community, I think that they've had to do it that way. So that they don't have long time residents of the lake being impacted and blocked from their own properties and or docks. By the week, you know, that week's. Party. And so I like the idea of Everett and keeping it simple and, and to the point. But we have to keep in mind that the majority of people renting, I would think in Lake Stevens. Are going to be renting here for the proximity to our waterfront. And that's a different story than Everett. So. That's my two cents worth. And I keep saying this, I don't know how I feel about it. But I want to make sure that we're looking at. Proper communities that are the closest to ours, not close proximity, but closest to ours. In, in the type of people that are going to be renting properties to come and visit us. They're not coming to visit. To stay in, in. Areas outside of the lake, in my opinion.
If I can just add on to that real quick. One or one city that I would be curious about that wasn't on this list because it's, it's pretty far away is the Lake Tahoe experience. I had done a little bit of research on this, but Tahoe has had some real serious growing pains with Airbnb. And has recently moved to limit, put some pretty serious limits on it because of every other, every other lakeside house becoming. An Airbnb. So that might be something that we can look at as almost a cautionary tale that would help us maybe guide some of our decisions.
Thank you all. If any other commissioners have any other final thoughts or if, if Joe or the city have any other questions for commissioners, please send them out. All right. With that, I think we're, we're on to the next discussion item. Also, I forgot to welcome Councilman Gary Peterschagen and Steve Ewing. Thank you both for joining us today. Next, I'm going to pass it on to Director Wright regarding the urban three results. Sorry, Russ, I think you're muted.
Thank you for that. Maybe we'll get used to this someday. Earlier this year, I guess it was last year, the, the city entered into a contract with this group called Urban Three. Urban Three also did some analysis work for Snohomish County and the Housing Authority. What they do is provide a value per acre analysis. And that sort of looks comprehensively at your city, compares it to other cities in your market, et cetera. And it's going to be a great tool to inform some of our land use decisions as we move through this next year. And as we start another retail marketing campaign with another firm. So I just wanted to share the results with you of their presentation. I've also added in some of the material from their written report. And then done some analysis to try to put some of their discussion points into, into context that, excuse me, may be helpful. Okay. So as we look at Snohomish County as a whole, it's grown exponentially in all cities over the last decade. And this chart actually goes back from 1960 to 2020. You can see Lake Stevens right here on the curve and it's grown, you all know, exponentially since 2000. You have some other cities that have also had that same curve such as Marysville. And then Everett also has had a sharp growth curve in the last few years. And in Washington, one of the things that they really focus on is what does the taxation system look like? This firm is from the, the east and southeast, and so they have some different taxation policy. But in Washington, including Lake Stevens, we rely most heavily on property taxes. That's what makes up our, our general fund and of the property taxes, we're getting, you know, say pennies on the dollar. Of that tax assessment with other groups also claiming taxes out of your property taxes. So the other piece of that is then retail sales tax. And how do we levy the most out of our community for both that? Property tax and then make it desirable for businesses to come in to levy also that retail sales tax. And this, these couple of graphs just sort of show you how they go through their analysis. What they look at are hotspots. So this is almost like a LIDAR type map. Where the darker the color, the purples, the dark reds, those are the most valuable or most productive properties. And as they get down into the yellow and the green on a value per acre, they have a less value using that metric. And then looking at the city of Lake Stevens, they also show you what the valuation is with most of our newer subdivisions. Having these peaks and then our retail center around Lake Stevens Center. And this is just looking a little bit further out at the county again, just looking at the total taxable value. And this is really based on just your standard property taxes. And then if you flip this on its head and look at what is it really worth with a value per acre? You see some things that are pretty different. For example, a value per acre, here's Boeing. Actually has a lower value per acre than if you're looking at it strictly from just the property tax. So it's a little bit of an inverse calculation. What makes it a desirable location? And again, that will influence the type of land use or zoning you want to have to have higher and best use on those properties. So nobody's going to take away that Boeing's not a hugely important. Part of our economy, but also if you look at the, the spread and the absolute low density of that property. Then you're looking at this other metric is, well, what is its value per acre then? And again, this is just a close up. You've already seen this slide and it just again, as the, you have these peaks, those are higher value. This one's downtown Everett, where the Marriott is and that mixed use facility. And then some newer, you know, multifamily neighborhoods, et cetera. And again, this is what it looks like in Lake Stevens today. One of the things that's a little tougher for this group to do is it's really easy to find out what the property tax is. It's not so easy in Washington to collect the sales tax data that's held pretty tightly by the Department of Revenue. And so they've gone out and extrapolated from different sources to add another layer to this cake. To, to show what a value is for a property and its benefit to a community. So some of the work they did, they looked specifically at what is the value per acre of an average single family home? And so this is going all across the city. This is from older neighborhoods to brand new neighborhoods. And so it's about 1.5 million per acre is what the value becomes for single family homes. You'll see for townhouses, it's about 3.5. So what this is showing is the more intensification of the density, the greater value per acre. That you see in return. And they do have a couple of recent examples from Lake Stevens where they show our farmhouse project, which is the, the newest townhome project. And then they also just give some examples, a couple from Lake Stevens and then a couple from some other cities. And contrasting what their value per acre is. And again, some of the examples they provide, you have to take in context that Lake Stevens is very much a suburban city. And when you look at Everett or you look at Linwood, you know that those are high capacity transit cities. They're near mass transit, they're near retail and job centers. So that does have an effect on that calculation for that value per acre. Same thing with multifamily. In this case, this number is a bit skewed. Prior to this last year, our stock of multifamily were very, very old structures. So this number is fairly deflated and this definitely doesn't capture the new apartment complexes that are in the city. That are going to have a positive effect on, on this number. And that's going to be more what you look at, you know, say, not necessarily what the, the value is in Edmunds. But it's going to be significantly higher than that first slide. And then again, just some other examples of multifamily housing in different areas. Then they've sort of gone in and looked at some commercial typologies also to assign values to those. And one of the things that's very interesting is how they look at the difference between big box centers. Versus smaller, more compact downtowns. And what you'll see is in their assessment, again, this is because of the large footprint that's needed, the large amount of parking. Your value per acre actually can decrease with some of your big box stores. And they use Walmart as their example all across. And this is just sort of an average Walmart value. And then you compare that to the value you can generate from local compact. Downtowns or shopping centers using Francisco's as an example, as sort of a keystone, looking at Monroe, looking at Snohomish. Again, the development pattern, the more dense development pattern can actually rise and see an increase in these values per acre. And they like to use this example of the, the little shop of light in Snohomish. Again, it's just conceptual that you can capture a lot in a small space. And again, I would remember that in the case of Lake Stevens, it very much differs from some examples they'll show from Edmunds or Snohomish. That have these historic downtowns that have had, you know, a hundred years of tenants and vibrancy. So a little bit different condition, but it doesn't mean we can't continue to aspire to have different types of commercial bases. So what we asked them to do was look at a few focus areas. The first one was the Southeast interlocal annexation area. We wanted to understand, we knew what the economic report said going into this. As far as what the cost of the city was going to be, et cetera. And we wanted to know from them, what is the value of this area? And what we found is value per acre was about a million dollars per acre of this area. And the rest of the city had been at about 1.4. So after the annexation, it actually did have a bit of a drag on the, the city's value per acre. As you look at residential properties and a lot of that, because there's still a large amount of undeveloped areas in there. It doesn't have all of the same degree of infrastructure, sewer. Fiber sidewalks, all of that. And so that becomes part of their metric as well. And then to put it in context, what I wanted to show you though, since the annexation has happened, we've had three major subdivisions. Not in the pipeline yet, but applications are pending. And there are three significant projects already with interested people in this annexation area. So what that means is with the ability to have sewer infrastructure and under the, the city zoning. That there will be a recapture of this value per acre that was lower with the annexation. And then they've done some projections for some of our different subareas. Those were the next areas we had them look at. Lake Stevens Center, 20th Street and downtown. And then they've also looked at the Hartford industrial area. So if we start with downtown, there's, it's, it's, we're fairly new still into our plan. What we can say is through civic. Infrastructure funding of the mill, of the main street improvements, North Cove Park, those have had a return on our value. And we do have a couple of pending mixed use projects in proximity to downtown. That will help create some of these spikes that they're showing. And some of the big takeaways are everything in the plan elements are very good. And if we can continue to capture the mixed use development, again, the different retail and commercial nodes. And more multifamily, the values can spike dramatically in this downtown area. And this is just again, the, the same things we've looked at, next steps, just continue the implementation of the plan. And again, they compare Lake Stevens as we are today, compare us to some of our neighboring cities. And what can we do if we follow through with our, our plan and really get the type of development that we're, we're looking for? Again, more retail, some mixed use and more multifamily. As we look at Lake Stevens Center, it has been one of the most valuable areas in the city on this value per acre basis. But you'll also see, just like we talked about with some of the Boeing example, or some of the other big boxes, our retail center alone on property value. Because it's a large shopping center with a large parking area, might not have the same value that a smaller, more intimate. Commercial area could. And that was actually kind of interesting. One of the things they keyed in on is something we'd already looked at in the subarea plan. It hasn't come to fruition yet, but reimagining 91st as a mixed use neighborhood and almost like a parallel main street on the other. But reimagining ninety first as a mixed use neighborhood and almost like a parallel main street on the other side of the lake. So they think there's a a lot of opportunity with that. And how do we turn that main street or that ninety first into more of a main street type feel? And so they have walked us through a number of projections where you sort of have your, as it is today. If you are able to add some, say, additional office, office plus more retail and transit oriented development. And then office transit oriented development, multifamily and mixed use. So you see a stair stepping if we're able to continue to implement all of those tools that are identified in our our subarea plan to date. And this is just a close up of that same graphic that again shows you where you can grow. And again, this is just in the the property value. You'll remember from that other slide, we can also put in the revenue, the sales tax on top of this to add another layer to these like a cake. And then moving down to twentieth Street, when the twentieth Street subarea was originally adopted. A couple of you were on the commission and the city council at that time. We designated some hotspots all along the corridor. We had some large retail areas and we had some business parks. We've achieved a retail nub over here. We have the Costco project that's approved and under construction here. And then a couple of these other smaller nodes along the corridor. We've seen that, we've seen the residential growth. What's different though is these were to be business hubs. And a few years ago, the council had decided they wanted to see this all be a commercial corridor, less than a business park corridor. So that's something that's a little bit different. However, some of the recommendations back from Urban Three actually look more closely to the original plan where they think that if we were to do the retail and also be able to focus on some office and high value employment growth along with the continuing build out of the big box and more intense multifamily, we can hit some of these higher value per acre numbers. And again, just add high value employment, additional commercial and add additional multifamily or mixed use along this corridor. And then we could see some of these really large spikes. And the the last area they looked at was this Hartford and Machias area. What we know today is it has a lot of low intensity uses. City Council has already identified this as an area that they would like to start studying. It's on your work program for this year. The first step is going to be to complete that infrastructure analysis now that we have the the funding in place. And then to move forward with some sort of a marketing and zoning analysis. Lots of potential out there to reimagine the land uses out there. So some of the key takeaways are, we need to modernize the infrastructure out there. We need to review the allowed uses for these low intensity uses like storage facilities. And then move forward with the zoning and marketing analysis to help us reimagine this area and capture some more productivity. And again, like they did with some of the other slides, the slides, they put us in comparison to some of our peer cities. Obviously, Maryville, Marysville and Arlington have the large industrial complex. So their numbers here are going to increase in value. And I will say that I worked in Monroe when a lot of this was built and probably was the permit review on a lot of these buildings. So it's interesting to see it have such a a high value per acre at this point. Because they really put a lot of emphasis and infrastructure into that industrial area. So some of the the takeaways, we're really doing a good job. The the city council, when they started with their subarea planning in two thousand twelve into the downtown plan in two thousand eighteen, very forward thinking and we have a lot of good tools and goals and objectives in place. Now with the first two subarea plans, ten years in, we're probably at a point that it's appropriate to reevaluate those. Make sure we still have all of the appropriate tools in place. And if not, then we need to to modernize some of those. And then again, the other part of this for the council, as they look at this, it helps them decide what areas should we focus on for our infrastructure improvements and our capital planning? So that's it for the Urban Three report. I just thought all of you might find it really interesting. I'm not quite as dynamic of a speaker on the topic as Joe with Urban Three. And David and I were joking that he's sort of gone around Washington and Oregon. You know, on the whatever year tour like a rock band and has gotten quite a following. So hard to compare with that guy. But it's very interesting information just to see that, you know, what good planning can help you do. And you know, again, as you think about land use planning, it does have an effect on our infrastructure. So when we build, you know, good water sewer systems, sidewalks, that all has a return on that investment for the businesses. And I know Commissioner Cronin has seen this presentation already. And I think it had some big impacts on him on, you know, his sort of thought process. So I will attempt to ask, answer any questions if you you have any, or if you just have any comments, that's great too.
Yeah, I can open it up like Russ said, I was fortunate enough to be on the call when during the presentation. It was just a very interesting, just the way the data was presented, it was very interesting. You know, I I advise anybody that's, you know, that is interested in the topic or that wants to further it, just to look at it just from a seeing the city, seeing the different options standpoint. And then, uh, like Russ said, the guy was a great speaker and it was pretty remarkable that, you know, it shows how much technology and data there is out there. Because the guy was from Austin, like he was pronouncing Snohomish, you know, wrong. He was, you could tell he was out of his element, but the stuff he knew about the city was, you know, way beyond what I knew or or anything. So it was very interesting. I commend the city for, you know, looking at that and trying to find new ways to kind of add value as we move forward into the kind of the future. Do any other commissioners have any questions for Russ or just overall comments on the the video or anything like? Hey Russ, one question, is there a chance we could get that like in a slide presentation? I know that it's easy to see on the video itself, but to like print out, is that doable or is that something the city's not trying to do?
No, we can absolutely get this information over to you. And once we get the the final report from them, it'll be posted on our our website. And this is the dry run of the the presentation for the city council retreat in a a couple of weeks. So I'll get feedback from a couple of council members on that after after tonight.
Well, good. Well, I appreciate it and hearing nothing from the other commissioners. Well, we look forward to seeing the rest of it. Moving on from the discussion items, onto the commissioner reports, Commissioner, Commissioner Huxford.
I know I was gonna go first. I've been watching very closely what's been going on in Olympia. I'm sure Russ you have as well. With this effort to rezone, single family zoning to upzone. So I'll be curious to see how that is manipulated there and and how it affects what we do here. So very, very troubling. But I'll leave that for now. Genesis trouble. Let's put that in the notes. What else is due, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Commissioner Welch, Jenny report.
I'll echo Commissioner Huxford's concerns over some of the legislation I've seen. I've also seen stuff with the ADU, DDU. We're not requiring on street parking, not even being allowed to require it. And some other permitting issues and fees associated with that. Because I'm the kind of the geek guy that actually watches the local committees of TVW when I'm working. It streams on my screen sometimes, though. I've seen some of the unusual bills that I don't think are unfortunately, I think one size fits all sometimes. And hopefully these bills don't come through fruition when it's all said and done. I would have a question, I guess Russ would probably be the best one or maybe one of the other planners. Obviously, how Soper Hill Road is going to be moving forward? Because a lot of development going on in the area there. And Soper Hill Road doesn't seem like it's getting widened anytime soon from the way I see Marysville moving. So I don't know if there is a movement on them completing all the projects on that road or not, or what's going on with that project at all?
Yeah, I I don't have great news right now. And there had been a lot of utility issues that they'd been dealing with. And the last I heard, there was a fairly major issue with the water line that had been constructed. So I'd like to have good news and say that the job's ready to be wrapped up, but it's it's not. And so that's something my team and public works are working on right now with the PUD and the contractor out there to figure out a schedule that can expedite the the reopening that that road.
Is that road opening? Because we also have the Highway nine expansion coming up. Whether they're gonna be doing some shutdowns and some traffic was supposed to be moving through that road eventually.
It'll be open well before that, but.
Okay, I know what the distance and time was. I know how tight the timeline was between those two spots were. And then I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Dor.
I just wanted to express my appreciation to the presentations tonight. I thought that was very helpful and enlightening. I I too would echo Commissioner Huxford, Commissioner Welch with my concern over the legislation that's being proposed in Olympia. I'm not sure how much muscle we have on influencing that. But one commissioner's opinion of it, not overly favorable at this time, as written. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dor. Commissioner.
Yeah, great presentation tonight, guys. Thank you very much. And then just out of curiosity, are we having a second meeting this month? Are we doing another meeting?
Yes.
So we're doing another meeting on the third Wednesday, correct? And then what about March? Are we doing two meetings in March or just one?
Dave and I haven't talked about that yet. In February, you need to set the docket. And so that would be your next meeting. And then that needs to get over to city council for ratification. So that's this month, but March, I don't know that it will be necessary, but we'll let you know.
Okay, but we're having another meeting and okay, that's fine. That's all I wanted to know. And that was it. But thank you.
Report for me, just congratulations to Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Dor. I look forward to having you guys lead lead the charge here and another good year on the planning commission. On to the planners directors or the planning directors report.
Okay, thank you. Good to see you all in the the new year. So as to the the questions about the the legislation going through, yeah. That seems like half of my job or is keeping up on the the legislation and the the bills going through this year. I have provided a lot of written comment already to Association of Washington Cities and to our lobbyists as it relates to the various missing middle bills. The city has shared definitely some of the same concerns mentioned by the commissioners tonight, the one size that fits all approach. And the how do we tackle the the density issue in a realistic manner without these mandates? And I won't get into to all of the details, but it is a piling on of lots of new types of regulations that would potentially dramatically affect our zoning and what we do. So I would encourage all of you to get involved at the legislative level. There are going to be some hearings coming up, I believe Friday or Saturday on some of those bills that you can definitely, you know, provide your your own testimony as a citizen on your your thoughts on those. But yeah, the city has been very active. And I will say, as one little city, they have actually included some language that comes out of some of our our comments. And AWC is definitely looking to us for some leadership in this because we have been active and we're aggressive in our own missing middle housing that we have passed. You know, we've had a modern ADU code, so those little things do matter. So other things for you, I'd already mentioned, we're going to be coming back with the docket at your next meeting. We do have three citizen initiated requests and they all revolve right around the twentieth street corridor. Another reason I mentioned that maybe it's time to dust that thing off and take a look at it and make sure that the zoning is still appropriate. So those will be coming to you and happy to answer any other questions from the commission if you have any other things on your mind tonight.
Any commissioner comments for Russ?
Russ, is it appropriate? And and I know that we're all watching it individually, but is it is it appropriate for you to send out to the commission? When those hearings are going to be happening? They tend to change and and you're doing this and we're all doing this on our own. But a lot of people look to us for direction. And I'm wondering whether or not you could send that our way so that we all are on the same page with with the message that we're sending out to people that ask us.
Yeah, I will find out when those are going to be and then Jenny could post those for your benefit somewhere. So we can, we'll figure that out.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Huxford. Anybody else have any other comments? Linda, do I see?
No, I'm good.
Oh, you unmuted yourself. You had a smile on your face. I figured you were.
Sorry about that.
Uh, any other commissioners or any other questions for Russ before we call us to a close?
Yeah, real quick, Russ, are we still? We're still doing with the forty fourth representatives right right now? Like we haven't, we haven't shifted districts yet, right?
No, I I believe that wouldn't take effect until twenty three.
Okay, just want to double check who you talked to.
All right, thank you, Russ. Are you, are you good or any questions for the commissioners before I call it call the meeting? All right, with that, I'd like to call to close the meeting for February second, twenty twenty two. I'd like to make a motion to call to close the meeting for February second, twenty twenty two. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you. See you guys all in two weeks.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.